With the actual, I mean, our student handbook doesn't line up with our policy, so that disconnect, there's a bunch of work to be done there that we will do in collaboration with our teachers' union. And as you say, like, the ability to have different strategies and supports. So if we're saying, you need to have a broader set of responses.
What do you do? What do you do? Yeah, exactly.
Yes, there's a lot of work that will be.
And I was on the board when they wrote that book, actually.
And I think it's been revised.
The original has been revised since then.
It's been revised.
But it's not been revised that much.
But not recently, yeah.
Not that much. And the second thing is that they used to have, before I was on the board, I got them to stop doing corporal punishment in this city. So, and it sounds funny, but I did.
No.
I brought it up, we never want to do it, I brought it up in a meeting, and Frank McNamara said, and I wasn't on the board, I said, you know, we ought to get rid of this corporal punishment, because all this shows, it shows that it makes kids more violent. And that evening at the meeting, they eliminated corporal punishment. So, sometimes good things can come out of quick things.
Yep. So, the other one I'll say is Portland Parents Union is, Sheila mentioned that they're going, she's facilitating a broad-based community conversation that we will be participating in, and PAT has also been invited to participate in, as have other community partners, that will be looking at, like, everybody at the same table, how are we doing this? So, we'll converge that.
You got my memo on, you received my email on that, and I've looked at that. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Matt?
Sure. Thank you. I think this, to me, the data, particularly how we see, we see a greater benefit for white students than we have for students of color, really reminds me of how important our work in, in talking about race, and talking about identity, and talking about privilege is in our schools. And I think until you begin to incorporate that deeper into the work we're doing on a building-by-building basis, you're going to continue to see any, and I want to say, I, the multi, multi-tiered approach, there's more than one way to do this, I think is the right way to go, but any of those solutions that are implemented are going to, in a positive way, disproportionately affect our white students than it is our kids of color. And that's because we haven't done the work in the schools that we've needed to do around race and around privilege. So, it's similar to my commentary several weeks ago now on Common Core State standards, where without, standards are standards, but without relevancy, without cultural relevancy, without curriculum that is relevant, you're not going to see, see that make a difference in the students who have been struggling, historically struggling. So, my, I'm encouraged by, by the efforts, but I also know we desperately need to continue the work that we're doing in our schools, talking about race, talking about privilege. These are things that are impacting our kids daily in our schools, and they're impacting our, their families in the community, so, yeah.
And, so, I just wanted to say to that, thank you, a couple things. First of all, thank you to the board members who have been noting that supports and strategies for our teachers, our frontline folks, are paramount to actually making this change happen. So, that includes actual strategies around student engagement, and around classroom climate, and around what is the impact of race on my relationship with the curriculum and with my students as well, I think is extremely critical. I think it's the precursor to the no in the classroom, because what we're trying to do is impact things before the student says no. So, what are those things we can do to avoid as many no moments as possible? And I just wanted to say that I've heard throughout the night, folks, both here at the DIAS and, and there, your own, in your own seats, talk to the import of the voices of our community and of our parents. And I think one of the difficulties for me as a staff person, and, in working in PPS, is that often the voices that have the opportunity to be heard the most are, are voices that don't represent the parents of color, and the parents who've been disenfranchised through these policies and practices, which is practices that we have in place. We've got policy that's strong, but our practices aren't there. And so, recognizing that the parents who are here tonight, to, to simply stay here as late as possible, to hear that this board was taking this seriously, that you are taking the import of their voices and their students' stories to heart, is extremely important to me as a staff member for the district, and I really want to express my appreciation to you for that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg, did you have something?
Yeah. Just piggyback a little bit on what Director Buell was saying about that, I was surprised at the data, that crazy good worksheet that I, that lays out all the different pieces. I know we didn't have it up there. And crazy good in that it really articulates or classifies each instance and what it was for. I was struck because in, as I looked at the data, I believe that the message about zero tolerance policies has made it through to me, right, that they disproportionately affect certain populations, but that's not our issue. I mean, that's part of the issue, but really, if we're looking at numbers, to Director Buell's point, there are a lot of things that we have subjective control over that, that we can be, we can be affecting immediately. So, I, that's, I really appreciated that data spreadsheet. The other piece, we again didn't get to see it up on the slide, but you showed us some of these dashboards that we're using with, with real-time time. Couple of things, just in the Jefferson, not in the Jefferson, but in the Madison and the Roosevelt cluster, I noticed that the, the columns for white weren't in the dashboard, so just an FYI, if that's what people are really using, like, if that's a screenshot, they're not getting that data. Second of all, I was struck as I was going through there, the, and we haven't talked about it here, but the increase or the higher percentage of special ed students who are experiencing exclusionary discipline, and we know that we're over-identifying students of color in special ed, so of course, that's this double whammy. Anyway, I was just struck by that, that's a really, that's a really, there are significant differences in numbers there as well.
So, what, the effect that that has is also when you're looking at that, that more specific data sheet that you have, and you're looking by school, is that the schools that are going to stand out are also those schools that have self-contained behavioral classrooms that are overrepresented by black students.
Right.
So, on behalf of the principals who I know would want me to point that out, you see that in their data as well, but, and there's some principals behind it.
And there's the compounding of that issue, of course, because as we isolate students into B classrooms, we are excluding them from general education as well, so it's a problem we're trying to address on multiple fronts.
Yeah. Other questions, Brooke?
I just want to thank staff and the superintendent for the transparency and the clarity of this data, as well as the sort of the incredible depth of the backup data, but just the way you framed the issue so clearly and starkly in your PowerPoint and your presentation here, and that the clear action agenda and momentum behind it, which, to my recollection, is the clearest and strongest that I've, that I've seen in my years on the board, so I've just really filled with hope at this moment, even as well as the outrage and depression of the continued disparity, but just feeling, it feels different to me, as well as hearing from our partners tonight. So, that's, that's fantastic, and particularly, I want to just really appreciate how staff called out and kind of shined the spotlight in your PowerPoint and your, just the data around the four to eight-year-olds, and just really making that a stark issue that, again, we need to be talking about, if not, if not other ranges, and I appreciate that you're already looking at different possibilities, but at the very least, four to eight-year-olds, oh my god, okay. And then also the, the subjective piece as well, that you called that out, and, so it's like, you're, you're giving us a roadmap of where we could go, and I, I felt like in past years, it's kind of been, there's been a little bit of it with PBIS, but not as clearly right now in terms of both the tools that we can use, and sort of the very clear policy and practice changes that need to happen around those two pieces in particular, so just thank you so much.
And actually, I'm going to speak just to, because much of this conversation happened with our partners, too, like, figuring out, okay, what, what are, how are partners thinking about this, how are we thinking about this, how does the moratorium apply, what's realistic for us, okay, how is our, how are we, I mean, we did a lot of joint conversation as we were both figuring out what's next, that felt lined up.
Right.
I mean, I think all of us were pretty excited about just what feels lined up, and what feels like we're in a good place, I think, to try, really accelerate what we, making a difference, so.
And thank you for that as well. I had scribbled that, but I couldn't make that.
But I'm thinking, I'm expressing appreciation to the partners, too, because this was really dialogue, to end up trying to figure out, okay, what's actionable, what's the, you know, how, what's the data, what data we want to look at, what are the goals we want to set, how can we apply a moratorium in a way that makes sense for us, I mean, this has been a real back and forth, so appreciation for that.
Steve.
One of the things that it would be nice if we would look at is, if you're really, if, if we're trying to create schools that are a good educational atmosphere for every child, which is, hopefully, that's what we're trying to do, and there is a, that's a little bit different measurement than who is expelled or suspended, or who, who gets in trouble. There's a slight different measurement, and that particular aspect of this whole issue, it rests a lot on how good the relationships are within that school. So, if we have these schools where there's no trust and respect from huge portions of the, of the people working in the school, it's hard to go out and expect them to have a really good school for all the children in the school and make sensible decisions that work, and thus attack the specific problem we're talking about here tonight, which is the disparity. You, you have to have, if you have that good, solid school, that helps immensely on being able to attack and deal with this disparity problem. So, we need to be looking at that over in this corner, maybe, too. So, we're saying, okay, what is the deal here? If you can't listen to your teachers, and you can't, and a teacher can't feel comfortable coming in and talking to you about what's taking place in the school, in the classroom, you're not going to make good decisions, particularly within that school, around decisions, you're not going to have the trust which allows you to bring alternative types of working with children, other than just get them out of here, because you can't have the discussions and the, and come to those conclusions and decisions very easily that you can't otherwise. So, I think we need to keep that in mind, too, that there's this overall context, too, of where we're really trying to go, which in the end would have a, would, would solve this differently. Not that thing, but I mean, it would, you're not going to solve it very well without that. Thank you.
I would say, as we, and as we do that, I think we have to, we have to make sure that we're not waiting to, to address issues that are affecting children now, particularly in, in the case, and I've heard you say this, Director Buell, bringing adult problems into, into, into light where we, they become sort of obstacles to, to serving children better, so, and I know that's not what you're suggesting at all.
Go right at it, smart as you can.
But, but I definitely think that, that that needs to remain the focus. And I would say there are probably schools where we think everything is, is going just fine, and those schools are still demonstrating to us that there's a disproportionate impact on kids of color who are, who are being pulled out of class, so.
Everything goes together.
So, I want to thank the staff and our community partners, and I, I think this has been a really fantastic opportunity. It's kind of the example of what I look for, and I think about us meeting as a committee of the whole to have these study sessions. I really appreciated all the information that you provided to us, the opportunity for us to talk and hear each other's voices, so thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to, as we know, talking about this a little bit this summer, and making sure that it's on our priority list, so, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're getting there. The next thing on our agenda is Franklin High School schematic design, yahoo! This is an exciting moment for the board, after holding discussions on May 19th and May 27th, and, as we all know, numerous DAG meetings and all kinds of other meetings. The board's now ready to vote on the Franklin High School schematic design. Carol, do you have any comments, other than Jim is here, we know?
Yeah, I really don't, Jim and Debbie are both here to answer questions. You've done your discussions, and you have a resolution that reflects your conversations at the last two meetings, so.
Great.
We really just are here to answer questions.
So, let's go ahead and get the, a motion on the table, so, we, we're not, we're not there yet, hang on. We'll now consider Resolution 4922 approving the Franklin High School's schematic design, the commitment of additional funds, and initiating the design development phase of the work. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Director Belial moves, and Director Atkins seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4922. Ms. Houston, is there citizen comment?
Yes, we have six speakers.
Great.
The first two, Edward Wolf and Joshua Curtis.
I'm not sure if everybody was here when we did citizen comment. I think the most important thing at this time of night is that citizen comment is three minutes. In front of you, you'll see a green light for the first two minutes, the yellow light means you have one minute left, and when the red light comes on and there's a buzzer, we ask that you please wrap up your comments, and thank you so much for being here, we really are interested in your comments.
Thank you very much, Chair Knowles and members of the board, and Superintendent Smith. I'm Ted Wolf, W O L F, and I'm speaking tonight as a board member of Our Portland Our Schools. Last week, as you'll recall, I urged you to adopt the additional criteria suggesting that to modernize the structures of our high schools without optimizing their capacity to support a robust educational program, would be a failure to deliver what Portland voters asked of you. Tonight, you'll vote on Resolution 4922 to approve the schematic design for Franklin, and as you know, the resolution would leave the additional criteria, for now, on the cutting room floor. The resolution makes no definite commitment to approximately $25 million that staff has estimated would be needed to address the student-centered criteria in the high school designs. This is a de facto judgment that these student-centered criteria are, quote, "nice to have," but not something we, quote, "need to have." By adopting the resolution as drafted, you risk acting on behalf of Portland voters, buying three high schools undersized for their educational mission from day one. I found that outcome troubling last week, and I still find it troubling tonight. Last week, you rejected an option to reprogram $25 million from the summer improvement projects to the high school projects, and I understand why you did so, although I spoke in support of the transfers. About that choice, I just want to say tonight that, given a difficult assignment, I believe that the staff assembled a list of projects for possible postponement that did as little harm as possible to the safety and accessibility aims of the bond program, and you should be encouraged that, when necessary, this staff can perform triage thoughtfully and responsibly. Profession 2 of tonight's resolution offers a fuzzy alternative to the commitment of $25 million. The district's approved budget for 24, 2014, 2015 offers a clear solution. By modest borrowing against your general fund in the current low-interest rate environment, without diminishing the operating contingency that underpins the district's favorable credit rating, you can assure that these high school projects will be built to the student-centered criteria. This is a practice the district has used responsibly and successfully in recent years. It's probable that low-interest rates through the next bond auction will allow the work to be completed largely with bond program funds, limiting the indebtedness and allowing any short-term debt incurred to be retired quickly. This is your opportunity to, quote, "align building space features with delivery of educational programs," as the resolution puts it, and I urge you to seize it. Consider amending Resolution 4922 to authorize staff to borrow against the general fund in order to apply the additional criteria to the schematic designs and the construction of Franklin, Roosevelt, and Grant high schools. This is not an easy choice. You may have to include debt repayment in the next bond, but $45 million of this bond was devoted to debt repayment for some very defensible projects. There's, the alternative is a lost generation of three modernized high schools built, that will fall short of the expectations and aspirations of Portland students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joshua Curtis, co-chair of Our Portland Our Schools, and that's C U R T I S. Last week, when you chose not to vote on a resolution for additional criteria to the high school education specifications, the implication was made that high schools built with future bonds could be built with the additional criteria, and that creative scheduling or enrollment balancing could solve the inadequacies with the designs of Franklin, Roosevelt, and Grant. Last week's discussion failed to address the inequity that would arise if Franklin, Roosevelt, and Grant do not have the additional criteria applied to them. The decision last week forces one of two bad choices upon the high schools in the current bond program. Either they must have a smaller student population, or the students at those schools would not be able to take a full schedule of classes. The inequity of preventing students from taking a full schedule at these schools is clear. The more courses a high school student can take, the better they will be prepared for college or a career. But there is also inequity in having these schools designed for smaller student populations. As the high school redesign made clear, the larger a school's population, the more robust programming it will be able to offer its students. By designing smaller schools, the students at Franklin, Roosevelt, and Grant will have fewer course options available. Scheduling solutions do not erase the inequity. It would not be fair for these students to have to arrive at school an hour before their peers at other schools. There is clear research, and any parent can tell you, that teenagers' minds are not receptive to learning early in the morning. Your decision last week creates a deeper and more important inequity than just between schools. Both Franklin and Roosevelt have a higher proportion of both students on free and reduced lunch and students of color than the district average. Building Franklin and Roosevelt smaller than other high schools in the district not only violates PPS's equity policy, but furthers the discrimination which people of color have suffered at the hands of PPS for decades. These students should not be forced to go to schools that are structurally incapable of offering a robust program. Their communities should not have to face disproportionate enrollment balancing. They should have the 21st century high schools that were promised to voters in 2012. For these reasons, I encourage you to build Franklin High School so that it can educate 1,700 students, who are each able to take a full course load on the same schedule as students across Portland. Thank you.
Next, we have Rita Moore and Susan Anglada Bartley.
My name is Rita Moore, and I'm speaking as a member and co-chair of Our Portland Our Schools, and I'm going to talk fast. I want to speak to you tonight about the enrollment boundary and programming implications of choosing to build Franklin, Roosevelt, and Grant too small. Earlier tonight, you heard presentations about enrollment and transfer and the proposed district-wide boundary redraw. Although both reports focused on schools serving kindergarten through eighth grade, I'd like to highlight a few themes that can be drawn from these two reports that have direct application to your decisions on the high school rebuilds. One, enrollment equals equity. For many years, you've heard about significant enrollment issues that interfere with students' learning. You've heard about the inability of under-enrolled schools to provide a full curriculum for students, and how resource issues have become more acute as students get older and need a broader, deeper, and richer curriculum to develop their academic potential. Alternatively, you've heard the problems of over-enrolled schools with classes that are too large, and buildings are so crammed that there's no space for the wraparound services that we know can make a critical difference for students. The resolution before you tonight envisions a situation in which these three high schools will essentially have to choose between under-enrollment and over-enrollment. I don't think this is what any of us who worked on or voted for the bond had in mind. Two, building size matters. As the PSU report noted, among the many complicating factors in rightsizing schools across PPS is the fact that PPS's portfolio of buildings includes many that are simply too small to accommodate the enrollments believed to be necessary to, to support full programming. PPS can be forgiven for having to make do with less-than-optimal learning spaces, since these buildings are a legacy of the past. Our legacy to the future should not be three high schools that we know will be too small from the moment they open their doors. Three, boundary redraws are not a panacea. Some members of the board have suggested that even if the three high schools in question end up being too small, we can always solve the problem by redrawing boundaries. The solution assumes that there will be available capacity to accommodate overflow. Current high school enrollments are at their lowest ebb since World War II. All projections are that PPS enrollment will continue to grow, you heard, 55,000 to 60,000 total enrollment, and high school enrollment will be approaching 20, could approach 20,000 within a decade. At that point, PPS will have little excess capacity unless the intention is to build the next wave of high schools to be much bigger than this first wave. Given how resources are allocated, this strategy means that we will literally be cementing inequity across our high schools. Four, Portland families want strong neighborhood schools. It was the foundation of the high school redesign in 2010, and, and we continue to talk about high school, about neighborhood schools as the foundation. A $25 million gap is not insignificant, but it's not insurmountable either. OPUS believes that the stakes are too high to abandon the vision that produced the 2012 bond victory. In your quest to keep promises that you didn't make, please don't break the promise that you did make, 21st century high schools that will serve Portland students for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm deeply humbled by the opportunity to speak with you, humbled because you are the group of people who made the decision to sustain the advanced scholar program by voting.
Can I, can I ask you to state your name and spell your last name, please?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Susan Anglada Bartley, that's A-N-G-L-A-D-A, no hyphen, B-A-R-T-L-E-Y, Susan.
Thank you.
I'm deeply humbled by the opportunity to speak with you, humbled because you're the group of people who made the decision to sustain the advanced scholar program at Franklin by voting to provide funding for the acceleration strategies that are working so well. I'm here tonight to speak with you about preserving something very special, and I ask you to consider what happened at Franklin this year. We had two Gates Millennium Scholars, three Ford Scholars, five Black United Fund Scholars, two Al-Forthan Memorial Scholars, multiple PSU, OSU, and U of O diversity scholars, and multiple full and partial scholarships to prestigious private universities. One of these winners lives in a home in southeast Portland that is lit with the light of one single lamp. Several of these winners have family members who've struggled with addiction. One of these winners is a leader in her tribe, a person who will preserve her Yorick tribal language and culture. Poverty has struck in so many, struck so many of these winners' homes. Franklin is showing that diverse groups of students in a 55% free and reduced lunch population school can exceed all expectations, and that upper-middle-class students and those living in poverty can come together to shine a bright light for other Portland public schools. I remember a time when it wasn't this way. In my 10 years, I see the decision to remove the childcare program as one of the most brilliant administrative decisions that has yet been made. The program diverted funding and FTE away from academic and arts. The choice to remove it has allowed for much-needed funding to flow into academic excellence and into our growing arts program. If we have come this far since 2007, reaching a place where 421 students in our advanced scholar program have all committed to taking four more AP courses, a place where the genius of dance teacher and choreographer Juliana Torres can propel Franklin High School towards being a national and state model for both arts and academics, that is our focus. Please consider what the population is clearly asking for. They're asking for the opportunity to go from that home with one lamp, to become their family's first college graduate and doctor. They're asking for careers that will take their families out of poverty. They're asking for classroom spaces they need to continue the academic excellence. Please vote for the reassignment of the child development program, so that we can preserve the funding and space needed for our exemplary academic and arts program. This wise move will show your support for the nuanced programming and strategic decisions in support of academic and artistic excellence that have gotten us this far. Your vote will show your commitment to supporting the amazing dreams and resolutions of those who inspire us all, the students. If you look at their choices and at the overwhelming academic success and strong graduation rate, including the number-one graduation rate for African-American students in the state of Oregon, you can see easily the will of the community. Please help us to continue to be the exception by providing adequate spaces for classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Anthony and Scott Bailey.
Good evening, my name is Paul Anthony, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y. I'm here representing our Portland Our Schools, and I'm going to be reemphasizing some points made earlier. Again, OPUS is asking you to amend the Again, OPUS is asking you to amend the resolution to approve the master plan and schematic design for Franklin to the full criteria presented to the board last week for a capacity of 1,700 students at 30.4 credits per student. As explained by Dowell last week, the current proposal will limit Franklin, Roosevelt and Grant to a functional capacity of 1,250 students each, taking 30.4 credits. We believe that if you approve the resolution as is, without the increased funding of $25 million, staff has indicated is necessary, the result will be three substandard high schools. Dowell presented you with three formulae for PPS to cope with the consequences of the resolution before you. The first, that PPS revise the ad specs for later bonds to make the other Portland high schools larger. The second, that PPS mandate a strict limit on the number of credit hours students can take at these schools, which, once again, puts the district in violation of the ODE's requirements for class hours offered. The third, that PPS not place additional teachers at these schools and hold to a higher student-to-teacher ratio, which puts the district in violation of its contract with the teachers' union. Each of these scenarios will have the same immediate result, constricting students' opportunities. As north and inner northeast Portland were reminded time and again in last year's Jefferson Cluster enrollment balancing process, FTE and the resulting academic, athletic and cultural opportunities, programming, and ultimately college and career readiness invariably follow the number of students enrolled. Our community has been dealing with the consequences of constricted student opportunities for decades, and you are now contemplating literally casting a grotesque level of inequity in concrete. All of the options for coping with these building sizes seem to us to be completely unrealistic. As you have already heard this evening, PPS is about to start on a complex and politically hazardous district-wide boundary redraw, one that will take a great deal of courage. You risk complicating that exercise exponentially by limiting the size of Franklin, Roosevelt and Grant, and at the face of it, the front of it, forcing the move of hundreds of students. Further, tonight you've also received the preliminary report from SACAD, which makes the point perfectly clear that differences in the physical sizes of school buildings are an intractable long-term equity issue and a significant barrier to educational Finally, neither Franklin nor Roosevelt have sites that can be readily built out to correct this inequity. As we saw in Dowell's presentation last week, whatever option the district pursues, the current build-out will essentially put Franklin's site at capacity. Portland needs all of our high schools to be safe, accessible, modern learning environments, and capable of offering a robust and equitable education. They will only be so if you allocate another $25 million. Thank you.
Last call, yes. My name is Scott Bailey, B-A-I-L-E-Y. I'm here representing our Portland Our Schools. We are asking you tonight to amend the resolution to approve the master plan and schematic design for Franklin. We support the plan and design based on the full criteria presented to the board last week for a capacity of 1,700 students, taking an average of 30.4 credits, what was referred to as option three. We believe that if you approve the resolution as is, without the increase in funding, the result will be that we'll have three substandard high schools. So according to your math, we've increased the student level from 1,500 to 1,700, the expected credits from 24 credits to 30.4 credits. That's a 44% increase, but the increase in funding is only 5 million, which is about 6%. Those numbers simply don't add up, and that's why we end up with the functional equivalent of a 1,250-student school. You're effectively saying, we'll figure out later how we're going to stuff an extra 450 students into a high school that is already full. One thing that has been suggested is to move to a flexible schedule. Now, if you add a zero period for all students, or a full zero period for all classrooms, you're going from eight periods to nine, to nine periods. That's a 12% increase. That's only one-third of that 36% increase going from 1,250 to 450. So you'd have to add three full periods. You'd have to go from basically seven o'clock to five o'clock. How are you going to deal with athletics around that? How are you going to deal with student clubs? Remember at Grant, for example, in the fall, a quarter of the kids are going out for some kind of sport. Think about trying to schedule all of that. Think about also, and I lost my place here, if there's a demographic bump, which we get all the time, we don't, we don't hit a constant level of students. It goes up 50 or 100 a year unexpectedly. How are you going to schedule for that on top of what's already going on? Another possible solution suggested is off-campus learning activities for students. We're not going to be ramped up in three years to be able to do that for 450 kids at a couple of different high schools, nor is the community going to be prepared to find significant activities for a full year for 450 kids at a time. The three high schools we're going to build should set the standard for the future. Within another dozen years or so, we are going to be, if the voters are willing, we're going to be rebuilding all of our high schools. And they should be safe, accessible, modern learning environments, and they will be beautiful buildings. But will they be capable of providing a great education for 1,700 students? Only if you choose option three and allocate another 25.7 million will you be able to keep your promise to the voters. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Board discussion on the resolution. You want to do an amendment?
I thought we would have discussion first.
I don't have any discussion. I've discussed it three other times, so I'm done. Others?
I guess I have a question for staff, which, which, did we, did we come up with a number for securing the foundations at Franklin, so that we can expand?
We did look at that. Probably best for Debbie to address this, because the details on it are a function of a number of variables, not least of which is cost, but there's aesthetic considerations as well, so Debbie?
Well, that was one of the, I mean, in order to get the seven classrooms, we were given an aesthetic design schematic, so that's-
Okay.
Correct. We have had conversations with our CMGC that the cost in order to implement the foundations and the structure, infrastructure, to be able to support those classrooms in the future is approximately $200,000. The bigger issue is the premium that you pay for not building that, those five classrooms today. So you put a roof on that and then sit and wait. It's approximately $500,000 is the premium associated with building it in the future plus escalation, meaning you take off the roof insulation, you take off the roof, you then are working over an occupied space below, because in both situations, whether you're building over the gym, or whether you're building over the CTE, you're building over an occupied space, and you also have the ongoing safety factor of having to deal with getting supplies up to that other area, building with a crane, et cetera. So you have to pay about a $500,000 premium plus escalation to wait and build it in the future.
Okay, as opposed to if we just build it now, it would cost-
Correct.
What? No, what? Those additional five classrooms, I forget off the top of my head.
So, so just, just the structural and the foundation-
Trying to square that with 25 million.
Is about 500,000. So that would position the CTE wing to be able to put the five additional classrooms, the extended learning spaces, the teacher work areas on in the future, but the cost of that would be, would have to be calculated separately. So the main, what you had asked for last week, I believe, in fact, it's in the resolution, is for staff during design development to actually work on refining what that cost would be to configure that so that in the future you could put the classrooms on, whether it was part of this bond because we had dollars available in the future, or some future bond, it would basically configure the facility to support that.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me, can I repeat back so that I have an explaining level of understanding or misunderstanding? You're roughly saying it's $700,000 to prepare the foundations for the expansion to make it the full 1,700 equivalent, student equivalent that we, that we all want.
Well, what we're saying is that your proposal says that it's approximately 24 to 25 million dollars to put the additional criteria in place today at those three facilities. What we're saying is just at Franklin, instead of spending that 25 million dollars, you're only going to spend $200,000 to put in the foundation and the infrastructure, but at some point in the future, instead of it being 25 million dollars for all three, it would be an additional one and a half to two million dollars for all three plus escalation based on when you decided to exercise building that. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, so for Franklin, it's, it's $200,000 to-
Pre-escalated.
Yeah, to, to have the opportunity to expand either during construction or at another date.
Correct. Today.
Today. And then, the other question though, is the 25 million is all for three. For Franklin, since, since this is, we're dealing with Franklin tonight, what is the number, what's the seven classrooms cost, the marginal cost of that?
So the marginal cost for the additional classrooms would be-
About $9 million.
About, yeah, about $9 million if we were to do that. And that would be on top of doing the structural and the foundation improvements now to be able to accommodate those, again, either later in this bond or in a future bond.
Right.
And those would be $200,000. So I, I think we would have to consider escalation in that as well, so I think a better number to use would be 500,000.
Okay.
So the other thing, you know, we have to keep in mind the time cost of money, and so that's why we're, when we respond, we're always talking about pre-escalated as opposed to what the cost would be in the future.
Okay, thank you.
This is really the compromise solution that I support and I appreciate you landing on, so specifically to read that second resolve during design development phase. Staff will continue to explore opportunities to align building space features with the delivery of educational programs, including adapting structural enhancements which may support future growth of classrooms. And again, whether that's later in this bond program due to things going our way, or in another, in another, in a future bond, so I appreciate that. And these are going to be fully 21st century schools that are going to be fantastic schools. So it'd be different if we were talking about removing the theater, or removing some of the wraparound services, or removing the art classrooms or something like that. So, you know, I appreciate the impassioned testimony that we heard, but we can have, you know, full support for our fantastic, our teachers' fantastic AP Scholars program, and the arts, and the wraparounds, and we don't need to choose among them. This is going to be a fantastic school. I support the resolution and like to move forward.
I'm going to vote for the resolution because I think they finally kind of got down to where it is. I'm also willing to vote for Director Reagan's addition, which we don't have yet, but I'm, and I'm doing it under this, under this situation. I'm a vote for finding the rest of the money to do the schools right. And I, whether you're using, whether we're using Mr. Wolf's suggestion, using the suggestion I was just throwing off the top of my head last week, or whatever suggestion that we're going, I'm a vote to find that 20, if it's 25 million, let's find 25 million over this period of time, maybe it's going to be a little more than that, fine, let's find it and build the schools right. We made a mistake, we're now stuck with correcting. The mistake was that we didn't put the, the bond out correctly in order to do what we want to do, and it was a huge mistake, and let's correct it, and I'm for, and I'm a vote, I'm right there to find the money, and if our superintendent can find that money, I'll vote to spend that money on those, on these three schools. There is some question a little bit about Roosevelt in the numbers, because the numbers are projected a little differently than they are. I mean, you're down at Grant, they already have 1,600 kids or so in Grant, don't they? Over 1,600? Because they have 300, they're graduating 375 kids from their, so they must have pretty close to 1,600 kids. They usually have less seniors than you do other grades, so we're already over there. So I'm saying, let's find this money, let's get it done right, get rid of the mistake, move on. I think that would say the most for the next bond. Like, yeah, we followed through. We did everything in the bond, and then we also found the money to do what we said we'd do, which we didn't have the money for because we made an error. So there you go. Thank you.
Bobby?
So I just wanted to clarify that when we passed the bond, I don't know that we made a mistake. I think things have changed since we passed the bond. So I just want to be clear on that, that there's a couple of things that happen. One is that we have more funding now from the state, thankfully, and we have put that toward hiring more teachers. We've reduced the teacher-student ratio. As a result of that, we're trying to decrease teacher workload in general, and we are at a point where we're trying to offer more credits to our high school students, and all of those things mean that we need more classroom space, and all of that happened since the voters passed the bond. So I don't know that we're trying to correct a mistake. I think we're trying to figure out how to deal with our new reality. So I just wanted to kind of make that clarification.
Maybe an error in judgment, because we didn't project that we need to have kids in class a certain number of times, and we're going to have a certain number of kids. So maybe it wasn't just a mistake where we counted up wrong, but we judged it wrong in my opinion, but I appreciate what you're saying, Bobby.
So there was one question, and then I wanted to offer an amendment. So first of all, in terms of my question, if we are able to build the foundation now structurally to support the additional weight of more classrooms, I'm remembering in our conversation last week when we were talking about doing the full build-out, but we'd only be able to do 54 out of, you know, of the summer projects. There was some discussion about a year from now, we'd have a pretty good idea if we could actually do a whole lot more of those summer projects. So my question is, if we build the foundation to support the expansion, is there an opportunity still in a year to do that add-on and have it complete at the same time, that the rest of the building would be complete? Oh, I love the head nods. That's, that's good.
So, great question, Dr. Reagan. There is certainly the potential with the bond premium that we described last Tuesday night, that if that became available, it could be used in a number of, in a number of ways. One of which could be moving towards putting additional five classrooms in. However, I think we would need time to look at how that might phase in, because currently we don't have that built into our, into our plan. As is outlined in the, or described in the resolution, we would like, we staff would like time to look more at the details of this, because as you point out, if funds were available, I think we would want to be able to describe a scenario by which we might use those funds to, to build Franklin out more.
Great. So I wanted to, I think that in my mind perhaps gets us partway, and I wanted to offer an amendment that I think will continue to get us a little bit farther along, that I'm hoping that my colleagues will consider. So I wanted to offer an amendment. Should I, how to, do I do this? Do I read it into the record first and then get a second?
Yep. You have to say what the amendment is, and then there would be a second.
Go ahead. So I first want to apologize, because last week I didn't have the opportunity to participate in the rather robust conversation. I did view that streaming, and so I feel like I'm up to speed on, on a number of things. But I, I also want to talk about, since this is the first opportunity, kind of where I'm landing on all of, on all of this. I think the first thing is that I'm not entirely comfortable with us sort of kicking the can down the road, and what that means to me is looking at the project as we'll get to that piece later. And let me explain that. A part of what my experience is, is that later never comes, and, and that concerns me. So that's generally one of the, one of the challenges I have. I think that, I think the schools need to have, need to have a capacity that is, is consistent with a projection of 1,700 students. I think the credit hours are obviously something we are obligated to, to offer as well, but there's some pieces of this that I'm not willing to- Um, but there's some pieces of this that I'm not willing to, to sacrifice. Um, one, I'm not willing to sacrifice. I think last week you mentioned that you could find, you could find twenty-five million in the general fund. I'm not willing to say that I could find twenty-five million in the general fund because I'm not sure where I would be taking that twenty-five million out. Steve could find it. Uh, but, uh, so, but that's, that's a concern that I have because that affects our current programming. It affects the services that, that we're offering, particularly to students that, as some testified, uh, are, uh, services that help support our equity initiatives. So it would feel a little awkward if it's an equity issue to add to classrooms, but then we'll take away services. Um, I'm also not really, I'm not, um, willing to sacrifice safety and accessibility. Uh, to me, that's sort of a no-starter. And, uh, and there's been, there were, I, I think, I didn't see the first part of the meeting. I think there were some, there were some testimonies. Certainly has been a number of emails that have come through testifying the concerns around, around safety and accessibility. Those were two key points for me out of, out of the bond. Um, and then the, the, another piece that I'm not willing to sacrifice is, um, the, the teen parent services. And I say that because I, you know, there's a lot of talk about twenty-first century, creating a, a space for a twenty-first century education. I'm not sure how possible that is when we don't take into consideration, uh, the challenges, the twenty-first century challenges that our students are experiencing. And one of those challenges happens to be teen pregnancy. And without being able to accommodate, without being able to support students in, in those challenging times, we see a contribute to dropouts. We see students entering alternative, uh, alternative education. Helen's View, for example, uh, was mentioned earlier today. They have a fantastic, uh, program for, um, uh, for, uh, teen, teen stu-, or, uh, teen parents. Um, I think too, and, uh, uh, it was mentioned tonight and it's been kicked around. Uh, Ted mentioned it, uh, this idea of financing, using that as another lever for us during this, during this process. It's not unheard of as it was, as he mentioned when we paid off Rosa Parks during this bond. Uh, so I wouldn't be adverse to that. I would be adverse to it if we're sacrificing some other things. Or I would have to be in that case pretty convinced that, um, we're not just throwing one opportunity out to, to grab a hold of another because that seems opportunistic. And, uh, and I'm not sure how, um, how effective ultimately we'll be. So that's kind of where I'm landing on, on these areas. So thank you, Bobby, for letting me go.
Appreciate that.
So, yes, I'd like to offer an amendment that I think will get us, um, partway toward, um, getting the number of classrooms, um, that we need in our high schools. So, um, here's, uh, the amendment would be to Resolution four-nine-two-two. So under recitals, which of course set up the resolved part, um, by the way, I was told that this is at everyone's desk and that there are copies here, Karen, for audience members if anyone's interested. Um, under recitals, we would basically explain how we got into this situation. So H. During this budget cycle, the board agreed to hire additional teaching staff and to reduce current teacher-to-student staffing ratios. In addition, the board recently agreed to staff high schools to ensure that students can forecast for a full class load up to eight credits. The board acknowledges that these actions can impact the number of classes needed in schools. So that would be added to the recitals. And then under, uh, resolutions, number two, which is good, would be improved to say, the board directs staff during the design development phase to continue to explore opportunities for additional classroom space. Specifically, the board requests that staff review the current education specifications for comprehensive high schools with particular focus on tier-one versus tier-two status for teen parent services in each school and whether these services could be provided via a regional approach. The board asks staff to explore other opportunities to align building space features with delivery of educational programs for high school students, including adapting structural enhancements which may support future growth of classrooms. So that is my motion.
I will second it.
Okay, we've got a, uh, an amendment to Resolution, um, four-nine-two-two and a second. Some discussion.
I'd like to give my explanation.
Yes.
So I was, I was pleased to see in the current language in Resolution four-nine-two-two approving the Franklin High School schematic design that recital B refers to our comprehensive high school education specifications as a guide because that truly is the correct term. A guide is not a firm set of instructions or mandates and shouldn't be. Things change. Flexibility is warranted and the amendment I'm bringing forward reflects that reality. Since we approved our educational specifications, two significant changes have happened that impact the number of classrooms needed at our community comprehensives. First, we are hiring more teachers as a result of better funding from Salem and our desire to reduce class sizes, reduce teacher workload, improve our student-to-teacher ratio and provide students with a more personalized learning experience. The second is our decision to ensure that every high school student is able to forecast for a full day of classes so that they, like all other Portland public school students, can expect to be in school for a full day. The changes we approved related to these developments are good for our students and good for our staff, but they also necessitate more classroom space at our community comprehensives. When you have more teachers and you offer more credits, that's our new reality. This, in my opinion, is all good progress. Clearly, there are many ways to ensure we offer a robust program to students, including facilities changes, scheduling changes and program changes, and ideally maybe a bit of each. Last week, I asked about a staggered work schedule for our teachers which could potentially open up classrooms for another period each day. We already do this on a waiver basis at many of our schools when we offer a zero period. So this is certainly worth exploring further. Second, we can expand our online learning options, career internship opportunities and potential expanded partnerships with PCC and higher ed. And these might take some pressure off, as students might earn credits outside of the high, high school classroom itself. But another option is to look at our current education specifications and see if there is any, are any possible areas where we can squeak out some additional classroom space. Last week, I suggested that we could possibly convert Franklin's proposed genius bar, which is the equivalent of two classrooms, into actual classroom space instead. I'm realizing now that we can design this high-tech space for possible conversion to classroom space later, if necessary, rather than making the change at this time. Clearly, this is a space that is important to our Franklin Design Advisory Group and the Franklin community and is fairly cutting edge. So I would ask that our architects look at designing this as a genius bar, but flexible enough to be converted to classroom space if need be. For background, when I was on the Forest Park Elementary School Design Team as a parent advocate back in nineteen ninety-six, we included an acoustically appropriate music room, which was slightly larger than a traditional classroom and included storage space for instruments. This room has since been used as a traditional classroom due to the high student population, but can be converted back at any time. Flexibility is important. What I'm proposing tonight is that we ask staff to relook at our current high school education specifications to see if there are opportunities and/or efficiencies given our need for additional classroom space. This review should look at several different areas to see if we can make space for classrooms. During this review, I'm asking staff to look especially hard at the current plan to have a teen parent service center in every comprehensive high school. If we were like most other school districts across Oregon that have just one high school, we'd certainly want this capacity at that high school. But in Portland Public Schools, we have seven community comprehensives, two focus high schools, one K-12 alternative school and a myriad of alternative school, schools, including Helen's View, with which we contract. Our teen parent population each year is approximately a hundred and fifty-two students total. And I believe I've read that teen birth rates are dropping. To set aside two to four thousand square feet of space at each and every community comprehensive for an infant room, a toddler room, a crawler room, toilet facility, changing area, nap area, outside play area, et cetera, as is now specified in our high school education specifications, is worth a second look. Clearly, we need and want to support our teen parent students to help them complete high school ready for college and career. I'm simply suggesting via this amendment that given our need for additional classrooms, we ask staff to look at our delivery model and see if there is a more effective or efficient opportunity to provide these students, these hundred and fifty or so students, with these services. Project management staff last week indicated that the Early Learning Center was a high priority for the Franklin Design Advisory Team, or DAG, and a key career technical education, or CTE, strand for Franklin. In fact, I'm told by several on the DAG and by teachers and community members at Franklin that the teen center was assumed in the design and that there was very little discussion about it. And on October fifteenth, when the Franklin Design Team voted on CTE priorities, the top contenders were engineering, design and manufacturing, health sciences and biomedical and information technology, not childcare. The pathways highlighted by the Franklin DAG are in keeping with our overall goal during high school redesign to provide more STEM, CTE and maker space opportunities for students and to encourage students to gain experience with careers that might lead to family wage jobs. So by approving this amendment, we will be saying to the Franklin community and to our other high school communities that we hear their concerns about the need to prioritize adequate classroom space for high school students and we are looking at all reasonable options to get there. So I ask for your support.
Other comments?
I really agree with Director Reagan about looking at some space in the, I still think there's space around maybe in those buildings. I do think that we need to have in each high school some sort of support for high school students who become pregnant and who deliver their babies. I'm not sure that's a full-scale preschool where you have four-year-olds and three-year-olds. Uh, but it's, you know, if you're nursing or whatever you're doing and we have that kind of support, I think that's an important support. I'm just saying, uh, twenty-one hundred square feet for a preschool is a lot different than having a certain amount of space and having childcare for, so that you, uh, uh, student can finish their education and graduate from high school. Those two things are not necessarily the same. So what I'm kind of seeing here a little bit, and I don't, is that let's look at this deeper, much deeper this, and see what the situation is. Maybe Atkinson doesn't have any space. Fine, then you can't go to Atkinson, but maybe James John does. Maybe you can put that space at James John for preschool, if you would like, to head and to do, uh, CTE. I mean, we, we haven't really looked at this, I don't think. I've never seen it come up. And do we look at this in careful, uh, Superintendent Smith? Did we, do you think we carefully looked at this issue and looked at possibilities all over and stuff?
In terms of alternates?
In terms of alternates or in terms of, of age groups of the children and how many people have three-year-olds or whatever? I don't, I don't know exactly how it, how it worked. I just didn't see it, so I'm kind of saying, hey.
There was a conversation about this during the educational specifications.
Way early.
Yeah, but in terms of, in this last couple of weeks when we've been talking about what are alternate plans? No, we haven't gone deep on any of these alternate plans. They've just been coming up and we've been pursuing what, 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 what are the implications?
Thank you, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, um, I'd like to thank Director Reagan for putting this forward. I think it, uh, and, and everybody for testifying, uh, and, um, because I think it, it's.
Your comments, Steve.
Steve, you too. But I, I do think that this makes sense because, um, it's not precluding anything, uh, but it's keeping our options open, particularly the foundational piece to make sure, spend the two hundred thousand dollars, uh, and get the foundation right. And then we can go in depth a little more, uh, keep pushing the envelope to get to where, uh, the financial envelope and the physical, uh, wha- what's in the, in the building, um, to get to where we need to be. So I, I think this is spot-on and allows the flexibility for us to, to meet everybody's needs. So I'll be voting for it.
Andrew?
Um, I will also be voting yes on this. Um, I think something that really spoke to me about it when Director Reagan called me about it and we talked is that it's once again reviewing the ed specs. And for me, that's really important throughout this design process that we're constantly going back and questioning what can we actually do? Like, uh, Director Kurler said, pushing the envelope. I don't think any of us are going to say that we don't want to support our students who are also teen parents. But I, and no one's saying that. But I think what we are saying is that we're going to find more flexible ways to do all the things we want to do. I mean, tonight has kind of been about how are we trying to, how are we going to do all the things we'd like to do with the constraints that we're under? And I think looking at other options is a great way of doing that. And, you know, I think this just gives us more options than we had before in terms of what we're able to look at doing. So I'm supportive of it.
Yeah.
Okay. The, uh, I guess I have a, a question about a, uh, sort of what a regional approach might look like for a teen parent services. But I also want to, and I don't know who I can direct that question to. Maybe just out there, anyone.
I don't even know this one.
Um, okay. So, uh, but I think, I think one thing we have to be, we have to be, uh, conscious of is that, um, there are, uh, compounding factors in, uh, in issues particularly, uh, that will affect, uh, teen parents. And, you know, there, we've talked about transportation. We also talk about a, uh, higher propensity, uh, to be living in poverty. We have, um, uh, there are situations where we have, uh, uh, teens who are actively homeless and, uh, and all of these things compound. So, uh, another option to you or I sitting at this table with gas money and, um, and a, a, you know, healthy, safe place to, to drop off our kid may not exactly be an option for a teen parent who's living in those conditions. So I, I, I really want us to be conscious of that. And I also want us to, to understand that, um, a number of these students are, uh, and I, I realize that the tension in this is that, you know, I, we're supposed to be educators and in the business of education. Um, and some of the other services that, uh, are surrounding that and supporting that are not necessarily in our wheelhouse. Um, I also know though that, uh, there isn't a lot of options that exist be, beyond, um, what we might be able to offer. So that's why I'm kind of continuing to, to bring this up. But some of these students are very much on sort of that, that ledge. What is, what is the one thing that can help them to be in the classroom on a given day versus, uh, what's going to be a barrier, an additional barrier? And, uh, and I think we have an obligation, maybe perhaps even more of an obligation to those students, um, because there's a greater need. So that's my, you know, and I really appreciate, Bobby, your, your back, uh, sort of justification and your commentary because that helped me understand a lot. Um, so that's, I guess, what I'm offering is sort of my justification, understanding of, of the situation. I'm, uh, and again, my feeling of, are we, um, one, are we kicking the can down the road? And two, uh, if we, if we don't do something now, will in the future ever come? Uh, because again, my, uh, my experience is that that's not guaranteed by, by any means. And, uh, and to students that have great need like this, like, uh, teen parents, I'm concerned that, um, if that opportunity never comes, we lose them.
Could I respond to that? So the first thing, the first thing is that, um, when I'm asking us to open up the ed specs, I'm asking us to take a, a deep look at this. It doesn't mean this is where we will necessarily land. It means let's take a look at the ed specs and see if there's other spaces like this that we could be looking at. This seems like a logical place in some ways. Right now, we're talking about reserving two to four thousand square feet at each of our seven community comprehensives for preschool kids. When we know at Franklin and at Grant, right now, we're twelve classrooms short for our high school kids. And so the question is, are there other options and should we look at that? And that's all I'm asking us to do tonight. So Steve brought up the idea of Atkinson as a possibility. Could it be in a few years?
Could it be in a few years when we go out for a bond and Atkinson is on that bond that we actually partner at Atkinson and put a teen center there? It's literally two to five-minute walk. It's probably a more appropriate place for a teen parent center for their children because it's already designed and built for young children. If you have a parent with two kids, maybe they're dropping one off at kindergarten and they've got another younger one, maybe you're allowing that child to be used to a new environment. So whether it's a regional approach, whether it's a school next door, in this case, Wilson and Ricky could be another potential opportunity like that. I'm just asking us to be a little bit creative, given that we know we're 12 classrooms short. Let's look at our ed specs. Let's look at what the different options are for potentially available space and some creative solutions. I don't know what a regional solution would look like. I'm not asking us to figure that out tonight. All I'm asking us to do is open up our ed specs, have staff look it at, and see if there are any options to give us potentially more classroom space as we do these rebuilds. That's all I'm asking us to do tonight.
Others?
Go ahead.
Just a couple of comments, so people understand where my head's at. Again, Director Regan, thank you for your creativity in looking for ways. One, for me, the resolution as written actually provides the flexibility that I'm, I'm comfortable with. I, similar to what I've been hearing a couple of folks say, I think these are critical services for some, some at-risk populations. And I guess as I hear and I know, I'm going to say this first so folks, my colleagues can hear me, I know nobody's asking us to treat our teen, teen mothers as second-class citizens or anything like that, but I just think of when we start finding other solutions other than right there in the school building, knowing some of the barriers that teen mothers face, it begins to feel again a little bit like we're treating them differently. Somehow they, a man could walk away, for example, and then the mom is there with her child and we're asking them to go to a different school or go to a different region or drop them off in another way. And your point to Atkinson, I guess, is that, that doesn't feel like a big barrier because it's two to five minutes across the street and down the path. So one, I'm just concerned about that, that for me, that having this actually in every one of our high schools is, is a value and does send a statement of, that we're serving all students. And I appreciate the flexibility that the administration has done, is trying to find, find ways to make that then a win-win for, for their students as well as, or the, the teen parents as well as the other students that might come in and do kind of a CTE strand. You're right that this, this was not one that rose in the DAG, in the Design Advisory Group as, as a high priority, but at the time, neither was makerspace or a couple of other things that we've worked really hard to, to work for community input to. My understanding is that in the community meetings, the community actually did say that this was a high value to them. And the, the next, the last thing, I guess, I, I don't know, I think I lost it. It's getting late. It is. So, yeah.
You done?
Yep.
Did you already speak, Ruth? I think you did, didn't you?
No, I didn't. I mean, I think for me, I'm comfortable and feel it's more appropriate to go, the resolution is originally submitted by staff and I appreciate the flexibility that's built into Resolution Number Two. And just, you know, in our governance role, the resolve number one, that the board approves the schematic design, which was created by the professional design team working with the Design Advisory Group and a whole slew of community input. That's my parenthetical. And as direct staff enter into the design development phase, my parenthetical, parenthetical with, immediately, since we're already behind schedule for Franklin High School. So I'm comfortable with that. Appreciate the flexibility that staff has built in. I appreciate that we may have different opinions about that, but we need to respect the process that we have laid forth and move forward.
Any other comments? Matt?
All right. Here, here's my challenge. You've heard my concerns around teen parent services. I, I like the second resolve here of calling out our educational specifications specifically as a, an opportunity for staff to, to review those. I think that gets us to a place where, where we're clearly directing staff to, to use that as a tool to guide us. As a caveat, I, I also think that, that, I think we can find a way to finance 25 million. I really do. I don't think it needs to come out of programming. I don't think it needs to come out of another investment. I think we can find a way to finance it. I will, I will vote for this, but I will be a huge pain in the ass if it comes to us making a sacrifice for, and not providing a service that can help support our teen parents. That's my promise to everyone because it is a, too often, we find excuses not to serve those most vulnerable in our system and we have to change that culture. Absolutely have to change that culture.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah.
So just thinking about the ed specs, and this was actually the other thing I was going to say to the amendment, I, I'm, I'm concerned about this process where we continue to get to a decision point and we ask for all the underlying documents and student engagement, parent engagement, all the, yes, they should be adaptive, yes, we should be able to reconsider them, but what I heard the Bond Accountability Committee say is we are worried that you're going into a place where you don't have a plan, that these documents should come first so that you don't unnecessarily spend money. The city auditor just did an audit of some of their building and they said specifically they could have saved a lot of money had they had a plan to begin with and they stuck with that plan. These are difficult decisions. So I'm just expressing a concern that this, this is again putting a decision and then asking to go back and review base documents. It, it seems like a really unfortunate way to, to work toward these buildings.
Can I ask a clarifying question too?
Sure.
In terms of going back to review the ed specs at this point? Any comment in terms of what that would do? Would you have to delay anything or how would you, how would you do that? How would you proceed?
So, great question. Our ed spec has been running on a parallel track. As you know, the only portion of the ed spec that was approved was for the comprehensive high school. So we have a plan in July or August to come forward with a ed spec for the other configurations, the middles, the K's, K5s. So the group that we have working on that is, can certainly take this on, to look at it. However, the group that is on the high schools right now are not directly involved in it. However, as we move into design development, if there's implications, that, that will impact the schedule. I think it's also important to recognize that Franklin is still about 42 days behind schedule and that time has to be made up somewhere. So we're already going to be compressing the schedule to, to make that up either during design phase or construction, so.
Because it just seems like that would be a very high risk, given that what we're potentially talking about here is rearranging the design. And I'm not comfortable with rearranging the design at this point and I would urge my colleagues to please stick with the design that has been brought to us and we can move forward with this design rather than to continue to, to ask for modifications and to keep going back again and again.
So I, no, I would just add that if we make a tweak at this point to the design, which is really what we're talking about, that will enable us to serve our students better for the next 50 to 100 years, I would say it's worth the effort at this point, so.
But what, what's the stopping point?
Right now, we're voting on it.
But, no, but I mean, when do we decide that that tweak?
If they come back in whatever many weeks saying, well, we looked at this whole issue that you asked us to look at and here's some different options, then we'd have a whole nother discussion about that and there would be a trade-off that would be a result of that, then we'd have to discuss that. And I just, at a certain point, we need to stop discussing all the different options and the different possible tweaks and things that we'd like to see different and move forward with the design that's been brought forward to us by the team. And I'd like us to do that with the resolution as originally proposed rather than ask for further delay in process.
No, you don't have a floor.
Oh, sorry.
No, you have the floor. So, just to let everybody know where I am also, I can't vote for anything that calls out teen parents. I just, I can't go there. If we want the staff to look at ed specs on a particular, they could look at, we could look at our ed specs on anything under the current Number Two in our resolution. I add to that, I mean, I think Ruth makes a, a very good point. We're 42 days behind. This amendment asks the staff to go back and look at the ed specs concerning teen parent services and whether the services could provided, be provided via a regional approach. And then what? Are we going to come back again and change the schematic design? And how long is that going to take us? We have to move on these high schools. I also just want to clarify that these early learning centers are not childcare, they're not babysitting. They're opportunities for our students who are interested in early childhood education or in education of any kind to get an experience working with children. That's an honorable profession and I, I don't think that we should consider it anything other than that. And I also think that these centers provide an opportunity for community building, for the families in the community that bring their children to those early learning centers. But most of all, I'm concerned about the timeline and so I'm not going to support this Any other comments? Okay. The board will now vote on the amendment to Resolution 4922. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. No, I'm trying to think. One, are you a yes? The amendment is approved by a vote of four to three with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Are there any abstentions? Okay. We will now vote on Resolution 4922 as amended. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. No abstentions. Resolution 4922 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative voting.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yay Franklin. Not yet. Okay, we will now move on to our business agenda. The board will now.
So just a question. And it's the, the fact that you guys, several people mentioned the idea of whether or not we go look about borrowing 25 million from ourselves. I'm going to just ask that you guys have this conversation and give me an indication of if you have four people interested in that or not so that I don't get it from one person later asking me to go pursue something, that I then have to track you all down to figure out whether or not I'm really pursuing it or not? Do you get the question I'm asking you? And I don't know that it had traction or didn't have traction. So, do you get what my question is? Yeah. Some people said that seemed matter-of-fact, that it, like it was, yeah, it was an option. Do you want us to go pursue getting you that in? I mean, I think in addition to having just passed this. Do you want to know more? It's just whether you're, I'm going to ask our finance people to say, is there? Tomorrow? Yeah, I mean, I'm going to go, am I going to go ask the question about 25 million in borrowing from ourselves? Do you want to know more about that or not?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. Will you check and see if I had four there? Okay. Did I have four? Yeah, but I want to know I had enough people asking me. Yes? Okay, thank you.
Okay. The board will now consider the remaining items on its business agenda, having already voted on Resolution 4922. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No, there is not.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda? Director Atkins moves and Director Regan seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda? Yes, we have one. Melanie Mosley. Ms. Mosley, were you here when I read the instructions for public comment?
Yeah, three minutes. I say my name, I give you my house color.
Were you also aware of the board policy about offering criticism of district operations and programs and, and specific people?
This is why I have this chart right here, so that I'm not identifying anyone specifically.
But you are. But you are identifying.
No, I'm, every name there is not a particular person and I'm not going to give my son's school name. I'm just giving context so that you can understand who I am talking about so that I don't have to say every single time, an administrator or a, it's pretty vague.
So these are, these are fictional people?
These are, these, what I am going to tell you is the background of my experience with PPS this year. These are fictional people, yes, and they're, all the names are gender neutral.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. First of all, I just wanted to say, Mr. Morton, I was very interested in your comment about three or four hours ago about we have an obligation to provide, provide clear, digestible information to our community. My experience this year with PPS has not been as such. The key over here is there an interest of not specifically identifying anyone. My name is Melanie Mosley. M-O-S-E-L-E-Y is how you spell my last name. My son, Zach, not his real name, is in sixth grade at Portland School, not the name of his school. Zach started at Portland School in kindergarten. From K through five, it was an amazing school. This changed dramatically when Zach started sixth grade in 2013. This change fell directly in line with a change in administration at Portland School when Pat came on board. Following this change, here's how our school community was challenged. Here's what we experienced. Seven teachers and two staff members left before the start of the year. Zach had all new teachers for middle school with the exception of one and they were out an average of once a week, leaving his class with a substitute on average once a week. A robust menu of electives was cut to two, offered each of the four terms, two identical electives every term. As a result, every student had to take the same elective twice during the term. Zach, a tag-identified student since kindergarten, never came home with homework almost. He had a total of 18 days of homework to date in sixth grade. You have a full timeline in front of you of the events that occurred to me with you all, but to summarize, since November of 2013, I have met with Pat, Pat's supervisor, Shannon, to address my concerns and my son's tag plan. Shannon was not interested in talking about any of my other concerns, only my son's tag plan. No concrete action was taken until April 18th of this year, when I received an email from Jamie stating that my Level Three complaint was filed on February 24th was not valid and that they would not address my complaint nor my son's tag plan. A quote from this, from this email that I received from Jamie, "Your complaint also includes issues with your son's tag plan. Shannon offered to provide support to your son's teacher to ensure that your son receives services that he needs, but you declined those supports stating that the only option was to remove Pat. In fact, that was not my only option. I never asked to remove Pat. I had it on tape, luckily, from a previous conversation with Shannon, that I did not say anything of the kind. I just wanted Pat to be a better administrator. What would have happened if I didn't have that on tape? There was no review of my son's tag plan until early May and just so you are aware, my son's tag plan started last Tuesday."
Thank you, Ms. Mosley, your time is up. Thank you. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda?
Which board?
Any part. If, this is where if you want to pull something out, you have to tell me you want to do that.
Okay, I'd like to discuss the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation grant and pull that out.
So what number is that?
4920.
Okay. Okay.
And 4925, I'd like to vote on that separately. And I'd like to make a comment on 4926, which is the student EH.
We'll do that. We'll pull each one out, and you'll have a chance to do your comment on every one.
However you would like. That sounds just wonderful.
Director Buell has asked that we... I can't remember exactly how we do this. That we pull item number 4920 from the agenda and vote on that separately. So we need a motion to do that, so that's your motion. And then we need a second to pull 4920.
Second.
So I'm losing my... So we have two seconds, all right?
Discuss that now?
Yeah, be voted separately. Okay, so, discussion.
I really still have real issues with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation giving us money for, in this case, its personalized learning. And I don't know what that is exactly, but I'm not sure... If we're not spending any other money, and we're just taking their money and we're messing around with it, I'm not sure it's the direction we should go. And I'm going to vote against it, but later on, since it's so late, maybe I could give an explanation from the superintendent of what it actually involves, or from somebody.
We could give you a brief explanation right now if you'd like it.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine.
So the revenue contract you have before you for $100,000 from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation is an award that we received after our first $100,000 award process was complete. So part of that, the initial process that we received, the $100,000, the initial $100,000 for, was a working group team that consisted of PAT members who were selected by our Instructional Practices Council by President Sullivan and other members of that council, participating with administrators both in the building and the district level. As a result of the work that we presented to Gates in January, we received the second $100,000 grant to continue our work in personalized learning. Those dollars need to be spent between now and December. Part of that work was to afford an opportunity for our teachers who are engaged in the working team to visit other schools and get a feel for what that personalized learning experience looks like from a teacher's perspective and from a student's perspective. So one of your questions was, I'm not sure what personalized learning is.
That we're talking about here. I kind of know what it is, but what specifically?
So what we're talking about here...
Because it can be several different...
Yeah, is meeting students at their appropriate rate and level. So I would say in the big umbrella typical for the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation funding dollars, that looks strictly as technology. For us, and how we've written our... How we wrote our grant application, how we have written the plan for the $100,000, it looks like finding different ways that we may be able to meet students' rate and level needs that are innovative approaches to learning, including technology, but also including things such as looking at furniture design and different... Right, so, for example, different... A really easy thing around furniture design is around chair design. So, you know, those wobbly chairs that kids in the middle school tend to focus a little bit better if they're on a wobbly chair, oddly. So what we're trying to do is seed innovative practices through this work, and really do it in concert with our teachers union. We've had really strong representation. The group that went 10 days ago to do site visits included Lisa Davidson, Kim Wilson... I'm trying to think of who all was with us. A number of teachers, all of whom came back pretty positive. I don't know if any other board member can speak to that experience, but it was a pretty strong learning experience.
Thank you. Apologize to the superintendent and to you for not having this information and making it known ahead of time. I was reading those catalogs all day that we had, you know. Making sure I got them all read. Thank you. So, okay. Now, where are we going?
Now we're going...
To vote on this one?
To vote on what is now 4927, which is the one you just pulled out. So, all those in favor of what is now Resolution Number 4927?
Go ahead. I have a clarification. So we started by separating out Resolution 4920, and it sounds to me like now you have...
We'd always separated out this part of 4920, just the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation piece.
Okay, that's what I was clarifying.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's all we're voting on.
We made it 4927. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of 4927, please? Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Passes seven to zero with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So now let's move on and vote on... Can't do that one.
Resolution 4920.
No. No, because that's already part of the business agenda, still part of the business agenda. So my rec... The other ones you wanted to see? Here we go. Okay. Director Buell, is there something else you'd like to pull out of the business agenda?
4925, the Council of Great City Schools.
Just that, not the School Boards Association?
Yes.
Just the council? Just the council?
4928.
Okay, so that will now be Resolution 4928. Want to go ahead? We'll need a second for that.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of 4928, the funding for the Council of Great City Schools, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
It passes with a vote of six to one with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and then you had... Was there another one?
4926, but that's going to be treated separately anyway, correct?
Are you voting... Is that something you just want to comment, or you want to vote on it, or what do you want?
I'll vote for it, but I want to comment on it.
Well, that would be... That's what we did up at the very beginning, when we talked about is there a comment on the business agenda?
Okay, that's a comment.
Go for it.
4926, we are now. I'm voting for this because it seems like we've done a reasonable approach to dealing with the tag aspect of this, but there are several other things that came up that I don't think we've done a good job on and that we need to look at further, and I just wanted to comment that we needed to do that. Thank you.
Great. Okay. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? No, the business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Midnight, almost. The next meeting of the board will be held on Monday, June 16th. This meeting is now adjourned.